United States of America and to the Republic for which this is one nation of God and visible in the world of the business world.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
You're all right?
Yep.
Excellent. Our meeting has been ordered once we're motion of the back of the agenda approval.
I'll make that motion.
Start it.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Both? Are the minutes from the main board meeting?
Yeah, I read through them, they all look good, so I'll make the motion.
That's starting.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Both? Meeting approved, that's approved. Uh, we have any general public concern?
Good morning, can you hear me? It's Mike Boston.
Hi, Mike.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Yeah, Mike, we actually have you on the agenda, so...
Oh, okay.
We're just gonna see if there's anyone else from the public, uh, on Zoom or on the phone.
Yes, just a second. Um, hearing none, I think we can move on to Mike, not only me there, and we have, uh, Mike and Boston with, uh, questions and hopefully answers what the Roman dam concerns.
Eric?
Is there?
Um, Todd Lee is here also with the running of the dam operation, so that we have someone that can answer, give us all the answers that hopefully that we need.
Well, yeah, I know there's been discussions on this the past few weeks, so hopefully between Mike and Todd, uh, some of those can get answered, uh, but yeah, we're gonna let them both, uh, give us some information on the Roman dam.
Okay, yeah, I did have a good conversation with Todd last, uh, Thursday, I was playing phone tag and, you know, that kind of stuff, not being an outsider, so anyway, um, just trying to make it as brief as possible, you know, you know the story, you win them up against and that kind of stuff, uh, and, and, you know, I, it's, you know, standard script about money, uh, you're trying to get anything, uh, taken care of, so I've got, uh, you know, some concerns with if something should happen and that dam would need to be some kind of repair or something happened to it like that, and I'm not trying to, you know, I'm trying, like I was talking to Todd, I guess, trying to refer that conversation the best, that it was kind of, um, you know, I'm going for, um, you know, it would be, you know, the old buzzwords, win-win, I'm not trying to hurt anybody, you know, don't want the dam taken out, people enjoy it, I just don't want, I don't think, you know, back to, to our concern and if it's gonna cause us a problem about the thingy out, which is not like that's something feasible, like, like if you could, you know, possibly think about that, if there's money to put away gradually, maybe like in three years or something like that, like at least have some hope for the farmer, then okay, clean it out, that's what it is, so, not getting, getting that, um, my, uh, request was that, talking to the DNR, John Garden, Jonathan Burton, um, you know, about the gate operation, which, you know, the county, you know, controls and all that long story, but all they do is make sure that you're compliant, you know, whatever, all those things that have to be in place, you just can't do what you want willy-nilly or whatever, and he says, just, uh, I believe, an alteration to the, uh, operating permit, I might have the wrong words, but anyway, it's like you just, it would be a, uh, by the county, what I understand it, which is an alteration to when the gates are operated, you know, or differently, and then they look at it and if that would cause any harm, or it doesn't matter, you know, then they would approve or whatever, you know, to, to, whatever the process is with that, just an alteration, where I was asking, like, is the case gonna be open longer or more often or whatever, you know, it's, it's pulling up, you know, and, and, you know, as the backup with this, you know, mud debris or whatever is causing, and of course, it's been wetter here since last couple, so, you know, thinking, what can that hurt, you know, maybe what, you know, uh, have made it, you know, the kind of general consensus, you know, the dam doesn't really prove much of its studies, uh, essentially electricity is, you know, generated from the, just a long gone, and the people are enjoying it, and, you know, no harm, no foul type of thing, and, um, you know, litter, litter, you know, free flow or whatever, but, uh, you know, Todd was trying to explain to me, and I guess I can't get through my head, that even have the gates open, that the water, it's not gonna run, you know, a hundred percent of the time, and I just think, um, you have a hard time trying to understand the gates open, but it's gotta, basically, I guess, pool behind it before whatever, to that point, so, that's something that, you know, as, as far as mayday or whatever, like, my, my request with the, the lengthy disretention there is just asking for an amendment to have the gates open a little bit longer, maybe through the planning season, the harvest season, um, you know, that would, that would help, uh, at least talk to the farmer and, you know, things are out there, um, just a request at that point of, uh, the county, uh, an alteration of, and they was permanent, what's called, uh, the gate operation, is my request now.
Uh, Mike, so, Richard Todd, so have you been in conversation with him about altering the permit request for state operations?
Well, we talked about that with Mike, you know, that's just kind of a, you know, he told us that on Thursday that that would be what it was asked for now, and he didn't say it would happen, I just, I totally, you know, it's, if I didn't, I was on the agenda for today, and then, you know, thanks a lot, he's, uh, oh, well, you're, you know, the same things, or trying to understand the same things, I may be a little slower in trying to understand the, you know, the process or, or whatever, that's, that's where I'm at now, so, you know, it wasn't like, no, I'm not gonna do it, it was just kind of a, just a friendly phone call of what I was gonna request today.
Okay.
Should we listen to Todd or is it how?
I mean, I guess, we can look at doing a revision, I don't have a problem with, you know, checking into it, um, with that said, on a rising river, we open both of those, there's two tainer gates, I don't know how familiar you guys are with the setup over in Rutland, there's two tainer gates on a rising river, and we open them when the, the river gauge in Humboldt gets to six point five seven. Once that river starts to recede, um, when it goes back down and it gets to six point five seven, we will close one of the tainer gates, and then when it continues to recede and gets to five point eight three, we will close the other one. By the time we close that second gate, there's very little, and depending upon how fast we get, there's sometimes almost no water going over the crest of the dam, it's all going through that chute or through the gate. If you were more liberal, or if you lowered the threshold where you closed that second gate, there would be a time there, after you closed it, where there would be no water going through the gate or over the dam, because the pool above would have to fill back up to the crest of the dam before you flow downstream.
Okay, makes sense.
I have some reservations about that, um, I know the DNR will have some serious reservations about that.
Cause that, then you'd have pools created and fish kill and all kinds of things.
There's potential there, yes. Yep. So I, we can look at it, I'm not saying we can't, but I'm just saying I would have some reservations with, uh, lowering that five point eight three number.
Yeah. There's a lot of fishermen that are, that go there all the time, every day, we go by it every day, and there's always somebody fishing there.
Yep, very popular fishing spot.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's my two cents, and, and balls in your court, be as soon as you wanna do, but...
Well, Mike, is that doable? If Todd re- looks at this and, and probably is gonna have to have a little more schooling for us, as far as, um, I've been hitting the head a lot, so I have to, I have to learn a long time, but, I mean, he's gonna have to show us how this thing works, cause when he explained it, I'm not sure I completely understand, so I, I guess that way, if we visit about it, had maybe sometimes even, I like to even go there and look at it.
Yeah, I would love to show all of you, if you're willing to take the time to stop there.
Again, I'm not trying to hurt anybody's enjoyment, what it is just, would seem like, I don't know, it's a simple request, in my mind, I'm thinking, oh, just open the gate more, but there's, you know, more to it, uh, but I just, I just can't, you know, figure it out if it, if it, yeah, I'm not arguing it, I'm just trying to, I gotta like shit or something, if the gate's open, where's, if, if the gate's barely coming over the dam, and these operation points, where's the water going? I mean, you know, if it's backing up, that's my problem, but, it's, it's got, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure where the hell's the water's going, if, if you go to, you're going to close the gates, but hardly any water's even coming over at that time, and where's, where's the river gone? You know, I, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just, just drawing a blank and trying to picture, you know, a river flowing, damming up, you, if the gate's open, and now these, and I'm sorry, I don't know, number three, five point eight three or whatever, when you open one, close one, and that's whatever, but then, there's no water flowing at that time, so you wouldn't close the gates, I just, I just can't get over that point of visually seeing where the hell does the water go.
Cause the settling on the backside is the...
Say, say, Mike, this, this is Rick Peterson, um, has your tenant had trouble getting into the field this year?
He said it was dry, he said the first time in...
Probably three years, because we've had excessive water for three years and all this river bottom, we, my parents own land along a creek, and it's been a battle, no matter where you are, it's not the dam that's causing the problem, I think it's just excessive rain we've had for the last few years. Let's see how this summer goes, and, uh, see if it's just more of a problem with the weather cycle we had recently than changing our operations of the dam for, you know, because of the recent amount of rainfall we've had. Um, I, I do like your concerns, and we do like to listen to people, uh, but I do believe the biggest part of the problem is the amount of rain we've had these last few years, um...
Yeah.
I, I farm, I got a spot, I haven't had a crop out of for three years, and, uh, there's tile in it, there's just not a big enough tile to get rid of the excessive, excessive rain, but now this year it's great, and I'll probably get a fabulous crop out of it, but, uh...
Yes, we're, of course, open for the sun, and, you know, things with his concerns and, of course, and, you know, replanting and insurance is, and, you know, just trying to, even though I'm speaking at the house, my parents are still, you know, alive and in church, and I have, uh, you know, it's more of a, you know, they don't know what you have to do to take, or too shy to get on the phone, or, you know, I'm just gonna take, take care of this way, as to what you can do, so, um, kind of a middle man too, with it.
Yeah, I, I understand your concerns, and, and, uh, we'll take it under advisement, and Todd, he'll get us more informed on the operations of the dam, and, uh, if we have problems in normal years, I think we should look at it harder, but I do believe the issue has been the excessive rain we've had. Um, I know farm, I know a friend of mine who's farmed a river bottom farm for ten years, he says, I'm not farming it anymore, he says, let somebody else farm it, I'm not gonna mess with that, he had three years of, you know, getting zero and putting the crop in, he gave it up, and now this year he kinda wishes he would've kept it, but, uh...
Yeah, that, that, because we're starting out, I got concerns, because, you know, everybody's telling the public it's not that way.
Yep, this gentleman farmed up, upstream from here, so...
So I need to talk to Highway First, the road commissioner too, about getting the ditches cleared, uh, because it's pretty bad, some of the spots, there is no ditch, but, um, you know, just, you know, I just kinda like okay for today, type of thing, but if you could please consider us, Kevin's making some money, you know, gradually funded for, if it, you know, clean it out, would help, you know, it's, you know, we can do this every five years or something, or, you know, you know, some way, uh, consider a budget that way, I don't know, something that would happen, now you're being a bad way now, you have to do some, I don't know what you're gonna say, maybe, just, but if you have something, if you have something in your house, you know, you gotta have, you know, money set aside, if the furnace goes out or whatever, you know, so I'm just, that comes the right words, I'm trying to come up with the right ideas.
Right.
You know, how we're finding work, or if you had something that you're in control of, how you can do repairs or replays or something, uh, cause that could really be in a worse off way if the gates did not operate at all, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, Mike, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Mike, you have my number, and you can call, we'll visit, Todd will do a little bit of educating for us, um, so that we're more knowledgeable about it, cause, to be honest, I, I have to have him show us, show me to see how it runs, so I know, so, I'll stay in touch with you.
Would that be considered a drainage, not just...
No.
Yeah. And, uh, obviously, I don't know what more to get upon it, and, uh, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, I appreciate it, but, you know, I have no understanding, um, you know, uh, acting like this discriminates against, because it doesn't, I wanted to tap us out there personally, you know, um, so, uh, I'll let you get about your meeting or whatever, you can give me more than enough time, everybody, that's certainly more than enough, and my request, and has to put my shoes on, and, you know, and, uh, just contest up, go now, you have the information now to talk about CRP and, and that kind of stuff, but it's something I really don't wanna go to, and as I talk to Todd, I can, you know, another discussion, and, you know, he can share with it, um, quite, um, can't give that more than just a little time, I guess, so I thank you for that.
No problem.
Thank you very much for visiting with us today, and, uh, Michael Bruce has your number, we'll keep in touch with that.
Yep, unless...
I appreciate that.
Hope for more moderate weather.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you, I'm sorry, so I didn't comment, I'm in, in Tampa, but then I heard, thank you, someone asked me to call or anything, I'm sorry.
No, I just said Bruce would, has your number, he said, he certainly will keep in touch with you, if any, there is any dispute or development.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, again, um, everybody be safe type of thing there, and, um, you know, good luck to everyone, and, you know, hopefully you'll never hear from me again, I guess, but to, you know, since this bad couple of years in the farm, oh, calm down tonight, calm down, and all that kind of stuff, is, you know, what we're at, so, um, anyway, hope you folks go, appreciate your time, and giving me the, the time today.
You better, thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Todd, thank you for your, um, speaking of Todd, on the agenda, do we have an update, Todd, on the, uh, camping in Sheldon Caverns?
Yeah, Bruce asked me to stop by today and just visit, I guess, with you guys, um, a little bit about, I don't know, several different things that are going on in the conservation world. Um, cabins are essentially complete, um, we do have a little minor cleaning, um, to do before we rent them, they are still closed, obviously, due to the COVID situation, we're not gonna start, uh, taking rental reservations for the time being, gonna kinda play that one by year, um, you know, honestly, for the safety of not only those renting it, but for the people that are working for us.
Yeah.
Um, I just think that's the right thing to do for now, um, hopefully sooner rather than later, we're able to get them up and down, but that's, that's kinda been winded.
The cleanup part of it, that's gonna be a good, a big undertaking.
Yes, yep, that'll be a definite added responsibility, um, we're gonna try using the camp post out there, Kathy Ubin, this is who that is, she does a good job, I talked to her about it, and she's on board, as of, as of now, um, gung ho, um, I'll play that by year, and if we have to make adjustments, we'll make those adjustments, if it gets to be too much for her.
How, how's the grass growing around them?
We've seeded, let's see, two weeks ago, we seeded in between like the pull-through sites that we knew, we seeded the beach field area, um, there was still so much traffic in and out that we couldn't see the area right around the cabins, we did that, ah, Rick, Tuesday of last week, so I was out there yesterday, I saw...
All the sunshine, it's gonna pop right out of you.
It's, it's, eh, not growing again, but it's growing again, I'll be honest with you, but the beach field area and in between like those pull-through sites, it's coming, we could do some rain, um, honestly, it's true.
Be nice to get some grass growing before people...
It would.
...drag through there.
So across your fingers, but, I mean, we talked about trying to water it, but it's just such a big area.
It is.
I don't, it, it's not really feasible to, to do that, so, I'm just hoping we get a little nice one inch shot of rain here sometime this week, and, and we take off if we did, so...
Okay.
It's done, but it's in Mother Nature's hands, I guess, at this point.
So, Todd, when we went there, I've had people ask, is it rented by the amount of people that are gonna be around the cabin, because they said, well, we have a huge family, and we've got X amount of people, um, and we have a camper that would be closed, so, I mean, I guess I was just curious, you just, is it a flat fee for, for the cabin?
Yep, the cabin is gonna be, we're gonna start at seventy-five a night, we're gonna see how that goes, if there's a ton of interest, and we kinda get the feedback that, oh, this is cheap, we'll probably adjust upward, um, if there's not interest, which I hope isn't the case, we may have to adjust downward, but to me, that seems pretty reasonable.
That's super reasonable.
Comparing other counties that have similar facilities, we're right in the, right in the ballpark there.
Sixty to ninety, probably, judging what I remember.
Yep, you're right, um, there are two, uh, camping hookups there, located in between the cabins, and we did that, kinda as a buddy type site, so, I wanna rent the cabin, but you wanna come out and camp and hang out with me, you can take that, that site with your camper, you camp there though, you're gonna pay the...
Pay the fee.
Sure.
Yeah, really great, which is seventeen a night, that site is a full hookup, so that's actually twenty-five a night, it includes stewardess, this is what full hookup is.
Yeah.
So, you can camp there, and you can, well, not, as long as you don't have more than ten right now, um, but, I don't, in normal times, Bruce, I guess you could have twenty people there with your family, if you had to choose.
Right, yeah. Well, I guess I was just curious, cause someone had mentioned, and I, I don't know how it's, don't know, I mean, you take ten people to the hotel, and stuff them into a two-bedroom and...
Yeah. Those cabins are, they're big enough, but they're not overly...
They're not overly spacious, they're, they're just adequate.
You're gonna sleep six in there is gonna be about the max.
Yeah.
You put any more than that, you're gonna be on top of each other. I, I guess if that becomes an issue of people stuffing twelve people in the cabin, maybe we'll have to put a little...
Yeah, if you have that issue coming up, you can adjust your rules.
Again, we're, it's gonna be kind of a learn-as-you-go type thing, and I, I would hope that most people aren't gonna try to push the other.
Well, I think we're hoping that we get to that point where we're starting to have it rented, and we're having the other side paying some of the...
Yep, yeah, a little money coming back in.
Bills that we have, so...
I'm hoping for that too, for sure.
I'm getting the campground's open.
Campground's open Friday morning at eight o'clock, um, governor did a, an updated proclamation, I believe it was Wednesday, and I heard about it Wednesday, like at four o'clock or something.
Show and office gonna be open or...
For now, they're closed, um, again...
A lot of are closed until...
I haven't seen any that are open, Dave, and you can correct me if you're...
I haven't either, I've been looking at camp sites all around, doing the inside, being looked at some, and...
The DNR's...
We're in the ballpark on everything.
I think we're closed, I know Webster, they waited a week, they're not gonna open their campgrounds until the fifteenth, I believe, which would be this Friday, I guess I haven't talked to Matt Kozler, but I'm not sure why he waited, but I think we have roughly, I was close to twenty campers between Gatch and Sheldon this weekend, so, it was me and busy, it wasn't, you know, a crazy shoulder-to-shoulder type of weekend, so it worked out well.
I think Friday was a great day, Saturday was probably a bigger part than with the weather than...
Yep, it wasn't super cooperative, which was okay, it's kinda eased our way into it.
It was a good way to do it.
Um, strictly enforcing the social distancing thing, uh, no more than ten people in a group around a campfire, and I guess, to me, as long as you follow those rules, it's not really, probably more safe than going to the grocery store, to there, I guess, so, with the bathrooms closed, we'll be okay as far as safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've closed for a while, let campers camp, most other zones contained anyway.
Yep, and that's one of the rules too, you have to have a self-contained unit in order to camp there, campgrounds right now, at least until the bathroom's...
So are the campmen are just kind of, are they the ones that are overseeing all that?
Yes.
Making sure that happens?
Yep, camp posts are out there, and so they've kinda kept an eye on, well, the number of people gathering, social distancing thing, and kinda cracking the whip, I guess, and talking to them, people were pretty respectful, everybody knows what's going on, and...
Yeah.
I think they just wanna get back out into their element, sit around.
Honestly, I mean, even from a mental standpoint, I know I've talked to multiple people that were just glad to get out of the house, do something different, and I get that, I understand that, so...
Yeah.
Um, I, at least, as of today, things are going well there, the memorial is coming, I know it'll be busy, so, I hope there's no issues, I hope people continue to respect the social distancing thing with no more than ten, but, we, I don't know, I anticipate that you will have to remind them of that at that point, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, I think it would be...
Awesome, well, we appreciate it very much for the update.
Okay, thank you.
And sometime I would like to go over Rutland sometime.
Yeah, I was gonna say, whenever you guys have time, whenever you guys want to, I think it would be really helpful if you actually could stand there on that camp walk, and I could...
See what you do.
Go through it with you, I tried, you know, with my...
I, I do understand what you're saying about if you wait too long, then you drop the board, and then you gotta wait for the pool to fill, and the river will run dry that time.
And I don't, I tried to explain it to Mike on the phone last week, and he didn't, it didn't quite register with him, which, you know, talking to him over the phone, I get, you can't, you don't have that visual, it's hard, I understand, um, but there is a concern there with, there's not gonna be any water flowing downstream there, and it may be for a relatively short period of time, you know, it's not gonna take long for that pool to...
But if it don't rain, it's one of those dry years, but all of a sudden, and it can just shut off, and it don't rain.
We've had that, I mean, I mean, we've gone from one extreme to the other very quickly, so, I mean...
And I know, the, the initial permit, I don't, do you guys want a copy of any of the stuff, the permits or the operating plan, was done in sixty-six, there was a revision done in two thousand nine, and I came across some correspondence from the DNR that expressed reservations about that no-flow downstream, even before they did the, the revision, um, so, that's, that's where I'm coming from with that, I, the DNR would look at it, but I, I don't know that they would approve liberalizing, closing the second gate, but...
Well, we have to understand too, we, we're all sharing there, you know, it isn't just one entity that's taking care of, you know, that's responsible, using that, everybody is.
Yes, yep.
But you gotta look at the whole big picture, you can't just...
Multiple user groups, and I totally understand where Mike's coming from, I know he's in a kind of tough situation, wants him to come for his parents, and I understand that, but, I don't know, I, you did a, I thought, a really good job of kinda reminding him, you're trying to farm river bottom ground, and there's, in farming, there's no guarantee with the best ground, let alone river bottom ground, so...
Well, that picture showed on the, if it's in section twenty-nine, which that's where most of it's at, is on the south side of the gravel road there, the majority of his acres, the majority of his...
Yes.
...over the dam.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, what little is backed up on the...
Upper side.
...side, that affects the water coming into his, it's gotta be full.
Yep.
It's, just, it's a sandy area.
I'm not hydrologist, but just with the naked eye, even if you did wait to close that second gate, I just don't see that it would have a very big impact on the majority of his acres, again, that's, like you said, that's my opinion, and I...
It's mainly just due to the excessive rainfall we've had these last few years.
So, and, yeah, I think you nailed it, Rick, honestly, yes, so...
Well, my son lived in the Kansas City area for, what, eight, nine years now, and there was that one section nearby that river where that great big bridge is, it has never had a crop out there, and that's been, like I said, I, I have, we of course haven't been down there this year, I'm sure there probably is this year, so, you know, it's just, you never, it's volatile. So you know, it's just, you never, it's volatile by a river.
Yep.
Which way it's gonna go.
Different factors, you know, the pattern tiling, too. I'm sorry, it's good for farming, but when it does rain, all that water comes faster and there's more fluctuations with the river levels. And it has a negative effect, again, on most of the trying to farm right next to the river. It's just, it's the way it is.
Yeah, fact of life, right?
So...
We appreciate all the...
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to come. And like I said, let me know if you ever wanna go to the...
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Bring my pool.
I know. I gotta get a...
He used fish there years ago, hadn't done it for years.
Okay, moving along, um, here we got Ben on Zoom.
We got it right on the schedule.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Ben.
Morning.
Uh, I've got a couple things on the agenda for today. The first is to approve voucher number three to Mayorman Bridge for the project up on Virginia Avenue, of course, Northern County. Uh, this is a remainder of the removal of the bridge, uh, the remainder of mobilization, as well as the little bit of concrete work that they've done and the steel that they encased in the pier cap and the abutment cap.
So with the rain levels down, Ben, is the water level low in this? Are they, they aren't having issues with that, right?
Right, uh, the, the level of the creek that's running through there is down quite a bit from what it was a month ago.
So that's good for progress.
And I, I hear their, their H piles have been going in the ground quite a long ways.
Yeah, so the, uh, the north here, those were seventy-five footers and they drove hard most of the way. The north abutment, those were fifty-five footers. They were able to drive those all, uh, basically in the same day.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're long pilings, that's for sure.
Yeah, my brother commented his cattle didn't like the pounding of the pilings. Oh, my brother said his cattle didn't like that pounding of that, those pilings. I was talking to him on the phone and you could hear that hammer just pounding them suckers in. He says his cattle were just at the far end of the pin, wondering what the heck's going on. But, uh...
Yeah, and, and, uh, we're driving false word piling right now, the wood piling, but I think that sounds quite an easier than...
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, well, I'll make a motion for the, uh, voucher number three to Mayorman for forty thousand, six hundred and two dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All of us favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Screwed. Oh, we have the resolution, it looks like twenty twenty dash ten, grant application for traffic safety improvement, but no red button.
Right, so this one, uh, this pairs with the item that's down below it. Uh, as we had mentioned before, we applied, uh, in August of this past year for federal funding for transportation safety improvement to put the flash red beacon above three of our high accident, uh, stop sign de-locations. This is a resolution endorsing this next application, uh, as far as the agreement with us in the Iowa DOT that says that we will maintain this once they provide the funding and install them.
So Ben, does this get, uh, blinking right? And then will it have rumble strips, too? Or, I mean, what all entails with the...
Right, so every location has rumble strips right now.
Okay.
This will be the installation of basically a, a small solar panel and a red light above the three intersections.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash ten, traffic safety improvement program.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Both? Pass. So, yeah, you said the next one kind of, uh, dovetails into the other, Ben?
Yes, the, the last thing that I've got dovetails in there with what we just approved, it's the approval of the agreement between us and the Iowa DOT for this same five thousand dollar grant for the purpose of the light.
Steve.
Anything that stands out? Do we have to...
No, they, they're just, uh, I guess dotting their i's and crossing their t's, 'cause this is like ten pages long.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion to approve an agreement with the Iowa DOT for traffic safety improvement program funding.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Both? Pass as well.
Okay, we'll get these, we'll get those ordered, uh, first of July, in this next fiscal year, since, you know, if we'll put them up. And then I think we have to let the DOT know that they're installed in case they want to do the inspection, uh, before they turn around and give us the subsequent...
Excellent. Ben, do you have anything that's else while you're here, that's not much of on the agenda?
I don't. We've got, uh, about three miles left in Grove Township for Holland Rock, and then we'll be done. We've started working on our, uh, intake and cross pipe repairs, and we're still plugging away on the bridge project.
I've seen a couple motor patrol heading out this morning, so I'm assuming they're still blading and getting ready for spraying, right?
Yes, yes, we're, we're still waiting right now. Uh, I've mentioned to the foreman, uh, tell the blade operators to start checking for weeds for Eric. Uh, I have not seen any of those mats as of yet. I don't know if there's a timetable for when you need those, Eric.
Um, let's see, for, uh, we have a full March or better at this point. There would be probably no spraying until into July, within sort of, you know, yeah, six weeks. And plus, weeds are a little slow growing right now anyway, so...
Forty degree days can do that, huh?
Yeah, everything is a little slow. But no, thanks, Ben, that's good, that's good.
Say, Ben?
I, I think Friday went over well. Uh, I heard quite a few guys say that they appreciated it. I know, uh, I did some drilling last night, got those kind of, uh, two-inch jobs.
There you go.
Good.
Good work.
I, I, this is Rick. I noticed, say, they're starting to do some dust control out there already?
Uh, a couple of, I wanna say, Vinos came in and did some dust control. Uh, the others are supposed to be coming in this week. I've actually got an application from a guy that wants to do his own, that showed up this morning in the mail, so that'll be on next week's agenda.
Okay.
But yes, uh, we will be starting to do dust control.
Yeah, good, because the blading's pretty much been over the roads once, for sure, and they're ready for them now. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Alright, thank you, I'll see you.
Thank you.
How many claims, maybe?
Uh, we've got a couple minutes. Uh, would it be applicable to maybe drop down to approval of claims?
Yeah, uh, I read through the claims. Uh, we have general claims of three hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. The large majority of that was rocks and, and bridge, bridge work. Uh, the drainage claims were seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars even.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Both? Claims pass, thank you. Uh, Ben, I just wanna, I know you can hear me, um, are you gonna hang around for the balance of meetings today? The reason I ask is we have some discussion on, uh, local options, sales tab, that's my...
Yeah, yeah, I'll be around.
Okay, just to, like, involve secondary votes, so that's why I have.
Yeah, I'm gonna stick up the restroom in there right now.
Well, I think you got a couple, okay, thank you.
Alright.
I don't know how hard and fast, we do have range at nine fifteen. If we wanted, just probably get, get a couple other quick things for a couple minutes. Any of the easiest quicker ones, the discussion on the twenty-fifth of May, which is the war day, uh, meeting process?
The claims week three?
It is.
Meet on twenty-sixth?
Yeah, it's fine with me, I'm, I'm around. I'm not doing nothing, I know.
I'm there, I'm here, too. I have an appointment in the afternoon during that.
I'll make a motion to meet on the twenty-sixth, since that's a claims week.
Second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us? So same time, place, just on Tuesday versus Monday? Okay. I don't think it comes to you, I guess, a little hesitant about, uh, the discussion on the continuity of the operations plan. I'm afraid that might take more than two minutes. But you can either do that or possibly go on the drainage a couple minutes early.
I think I'll make a motion to go on the drainage. By the time we get set up, it'll be time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thanks, good, thanks, Rick.
Morning, children.
Morning.
How's court been running, fine?
Yeah, we have one thing, I think they've taken care of something.
Okay.
We should be good today.
Are they having a lot of court or the minimal, or what's the...
No, not much. We've been having some bone hearings.
What, a lot?
The new cases, they have to have their arrangements, so that's, we've had a lot of those, but phone juvenile hearings, phone commitments, and that's about it.
My sister-in-law works down in Polk County in the court system. She says it's gonna take three years to get caught up.
It's gonna, when we start up again, it's gonna be a mess, because attorney can't meet with their client. They're allowed to do things by email and mail, but not everybody, not every person is responding. And then you take some of these people who are irresponsible at the beginning with...
They ask them to get on the Zoom.
Let them sit for five months without having to do anything, they forget about it. So, you know, we start up, I think, probably in July, and we're gonna have, we're gonna be swamped here with just trying to take care of the cases that are pending. Everything's been moved from March to, firstly, I moved to May, I know it came to this week, the little guy moved to June again, no, they're in July or August. But then magistrate court, he's had a hearing in October now, 'cause we're not having anything in magistrate court. But it, it, well, we'll definitely know that it'll be back to work.
Yeah.
So there'll, there'll be, that's the worst thing. It'd just be nice when the attorneys can meet their clients at the courthouse again.
Wouldn't think it's somewhat normal.
Yeah, 'cause it, 'cause it, well, people don't live anywhere near Humble, they don't wanna come here when their clients won't be here again.
Don't want them.
They can't say, I'll meet you outside the courthouse and we'll do it in the parking lot, and people are like, what? Or the attorneys that can't find their client, can't get in touch with their clients, their clients are showing up. So we're not, they won't call your attorney, but, you know, they're not gonna go to Juul right now, they're gonna meet with their lawyer. So it's been, just been weird.
Yeah.
Trying to make sure people aren't sitting in jail for months and months and months and months when...
And that could be happening.
It's definitely happening. We have two here who are in our jail that they, one would get out, one should be, they both should be in jail for, one, I haven't read the people's whole timeline on this week. And then the other one violated pre-trial reading. But even probation people, when they don't wanna do a prison, we can't hold them in jail from March till August.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll discharge their...
Trish is here, Eric.
Okay, I can see you, Dave, and Bruce, oh, yeah, we can go ahead and start. Uh, looks like you just have a possible action on the billing policy for workers. I do have the information that Trish sent to us, so I'll let, uh, let her go ahead and, uh, go through that, everyone.
Okay, um, we've had some issues with people submitting billings that doesn't have the correct information or any information where to bill it or anything. So I think we need to just establish exactly what they need to provide for the billing. And I don't know if we eventually make that a solution or something, or adjusted our policy.
You make that your prot- protocol, your lay-out's your protocol, and make, and then that's a requirement.
Because, you know, most of them know what to do, and it's just somehow just don't.
So you're gonna send this to all of the vendors that you use?
Yes.
Our contractors, any of that vendors?
So if, if this is the things that you're gonna require in order to make that, that this thing will be, say, Bill Smith comes from Clarion, first time he's working, he's gonna get a copy of this? And you submit a bill, all this stuff has to be on there, or it's gonna get sent back to you? That's the easiest way.
Well, if he does not have a work permit first, he will not get paid.
No.
Even if he does the work, if he does not get a work permit first, they do not get paid.
Look at what proof of insurance, too?
Yeah, they should be providing that, and most of them don't.
Do we know that all of them, that their insurance is up to date? Because through me, when new co-ups, they have an anniversary. And when my insurance, they, it comes due on, once a year, she calls and says, have your insurance agent send me your proof that you are still insured, so that, do we do that?
We should, we need to.
We may, may need to do that, just for the simple fact that we are, uh, on the hook if they tear through a fibrotic line, or they don't have any proof that they, well, they thought they were insured. So I just would put that on their name, and I'm gonna use one of our contractors, Doug Marshall. His anniversary date would be, say, June first. Next June, or before the June first deadline, we send him an email or a message and say, Doug, can you make sure whoever your insurance agent sends me your proof? Most of them will just fax it or email it to you, and it's easily done.
Is that your accord?
Hmm?
The accord, or whatever it is, proof of insurance?
Proof of insurance.
Yeah.
And I guess as long as all of those numbers or all of those, the work order, the township, the section, the drainage district, the landowner, the tenant pictures, I think the pictures are huge. Especially when we aren't able to go stand over the top of a hole and look down in there.
Before they cover it up.
Yeah.
'Cause you don't know what was done.
I like to see the proof of the thing that when they open it up and you can see that there's a broken pipe, they take pictures, they... I like to see the proof of the thing, that when they open it up, and you can see that there's a broken pipe, they take pictures, they, "This is how we repaired it, this is what it looked like when they pulled the broken stuff out, this is what it looked like before we buried it."
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, and just a handful of pictures, the more for you, the more you get to put into your file that prove that it was properly taken care of. And if all those things are on there, that, and that's gonna make your billing easier, streamline it, I'm good.
Yes, 'cause, and a good description of what was done is always kinda handy on the billing. And I did examples of different ones that we currently use, just for you to see what we have going on, and I think they're pretty decent, I mean. You just need to make sure everybody does it, just comes in and asks.
Yeah.
Well, can you send this out, and you're, to all of your contractors, and they would have a, you can do that right away? And then they'll have the examples, they'll know what the requirements are? And the proof of, that are really large, you can look at insurance, that's, that's huge.
Yeah.
Yeah, they gotta have that.
And I have never seen anything, I mean, I get it occasionally on different ones, but...
We get it on the big projects.
Right, we never have had, I think you need to do to all of them, like you said, if you go through fiber optics, then we're...
Yeah, and all of a sudden, there's a, the kite cuts, he's out there digging, "Whoops, cut the line, load up, let's get out of here."
Yeah, exactly.
You know, that's why they have to have that work order in their hand, before they start digging.
And I, I'm just looking at the back pages, example three, I see rock fourteen tons, we, I mean, do they submit bills, receipts, that, when they do that, or how, or they just put on there, "Hulk fourteen tons"?
Generally, they just put the, it's a, it's not the subalter thing they have for billing.
Okay, I just didn't know how that worked.
Well, I've listened to all this, I think, uh, everyone's kinda hitting the nail on the head, I think somewhere, mention protocol, obviously, the protocol is you need the work order, Trish mentioned, um, and the points that Trish pointed out, and Trish said, just, uh, basically, the contractor has to be informed of this prior to moving forward with any work. Uh, I would throw one thing out, uh, Bruce brought up the proof of insurance, which everyone needs as a contractor, no matter what you're doing. If there's any question, when the work order is initiated, uh, I'm, I'm sure you can hear this, and I know the protocol of work on the right away, you have to provide proof of insurance, work permit. So, I don't see any reason, if there's any question, that you don't have that on file, you could ask for a proof of insurance, uh, before the work order is submitted to the contractor, so.
Yeah, and a lot of my guys, uh, the regulars, Gary Jensen, those guys, they just mail us one every year, just to cover their bases. So, if you've got regulars like, uh, Jensen, Corey Benz, any of those guys that do work, they should just email in a copy directly to you over here.
Okay.
Well, just to kinda help out with the proof of insurance, which is a very seemingly good idea.
And the other thing I would say, Trish, is if you have somebody, uh, somebody's doing a job, and, and it's in my area, you can call and say, "Hey, if you get time, will you drive out by there?" I'd try my best, I can't guarantee it'll be early in the morning, or sometime during the day, but I will try to shoot by there to take a look, or you don't have to, I mean, lean on us, we can run out by there and take a picture, take a look, take a whatever. We're all able to do that.
Yep, or a good job description. So...
I think it, just to give everybody one thing.
Right.
Okay.
So, do we need to make a motion on this, or how, I mean, is it a policy?
Not really, I mean, I, I don't know if you want to or not, except...
I think it'd be, I think it'd be...
You think that's...
I think it should be.
Okay.
Make a motion.
I would make a motion to accept this as, uh, policy for the drainage district, that, uh, all that criteria is followed in order to be paid.
I'll second.
If it is not followed, they don't get paid.
Right, yeah, exactly.
And then next time, they will follow.
That's right.
Well, Rick, just so you know, you bring up some pretty good points, first of all, the work order, if you don't have one, and you said, "Nellie, you don't get paid," so, kinda goes along with the policy.
Right.
So, any further discussion? Call or paper?
Aye.
All, there you have it.
Now, you can bang your fists when they come in and say, "Why haven't I?" 'Cause you didn't do it.
Well, yeah, exactly, and if you, you send this letter out to them, and you put that in there, that'd be, that would be one key note for whatever your letter's gonna say, is that if you do not have a work order, you will not be paid.
Right.
Perfect.
Yes.
Anything else, so, Trish, now that we're all agreeing?
I did send a, um, work order list to you, emails, and everybody here has a copy of the ones outstanding by, um, contractor.
How many of these contractors go out and look at jobs and charges for looking at them?
One.
Why?
I don't think he will be, in the future.
Did you, uh, address that?
Mm-hmm. Eric has spoke to him too, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah, that, uh, that's not acceptable, when you get up in the morning and you drive out, look at a project, and you charge, "How's the project?" That's just not, that's not protocol, we have no other contractors that do that.
Well, I guess, uh, I like the ideas that we have the work orders in front of us, and I guess, I still believe that we should get a, especially through the work season, later we don't get a whole lot done, but, um, if nothing else, as you check them off, just send us, or either an email or a list as to X amount have been completed, so we can kinda...
With that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like to...
Just give us an update, later on in the summer.
If we need to rattle somebody's cage and say, "Hey, are you gonna get this looked at?", 'cause if not, we need to move it to someone that's gonna be more active with it, that's the way I look at it.
And I know Doug said he has quite a few of his done, so, he hasn't gotten the billing on them yet, so, that's pretty normal.
While they wait for rainy days, they like the sunshine and...
More often than he probably knows, but yeah, uh, you mentioned a couple of good things, going out looking at things in person is good, and, um, you've tracked, uh, no progress of the work order list. So, I think we're on the right track of policy.
Perfect.
Good.
Anything else, drainage related?
Nope.
Anybody coming in to attack you that I need to be here?
Glad to know you're outside here.
How did you guys get in?
I kicked the door, shot my way in, I'm surprised you didn't hear the banging.
We're being harassed by the sheriff's department, Eric.
Well, we should all reduce it by now. I don't know if we can charge him for harassing or not, but...
Well, we got it on video.
Yeah, good, well, uh, for drainage, I can entertain a motion to go out, uh, Trish.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, out of drainage, back to our regular work meeting, I know you have a clear range, get picky bound, get before we, uh, do drainage.
Okay, I'll be back with picky. Thank you.
Trish, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Thank you.
I thought I had that list last week, and... I think I need to go through my... I don't understand how this thing gets fulfilled. Ben, did you get your concrete in?
I wish, no, uh, in, in the house, it's getting dark, uh, this morning, it was fifty-seven, I think, by...
Ooh.
The white kids are huddling underneath the blankets right now. The propane line got cut, which leads down the hole.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Hopefully this week, but, uh, I, I think they're calling for rain, a few days.
Yeah, the end of the week, it's gonna be a little wet.
When we get done here, I'm probably gonna give them a call and see what is time for rain.
All right, we're back in general session.
All right, very good, uh, I can see that we have Randy on the line, so to speak, and, uh, he's got a little information for us, so Randy, I feel like you can take it away, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, uh, good morning, everybody, first of all, and belay the Happy Mother's Day to those who are mothers, and, uh, I just had some information, uh, and I guess I got a couple of questions. It came about, uh, as of late last week, so I, uh, thank you for getting me, uh, on the agenda here, making sure we're in a change. Uh, a month and a half ago, I was contacted by a company named Fullerton Engineering, and they were acquiring about properties, uh, round boats, and also Brad gave within a mile, and he just... And they asked me to provide information on parcels that would be within one mile of those two towns, that would be possible, uh, properties that they would look at, putting in, uh, basically, it's a wireless internet, uh, tower for next link, and, uh, so I did that, and, uh, then on, on Thursday, I received a contact back from them, and they're trying to pare down possible properties for a tower, and, uh, but they indicated they looked at our ordinance, and it was pretty vague on, uh, any specific things that we would require. So, I told them I would look at these ordinance again, just to make sure, and I, I did that, and I also found there was some really vague things as far as, uh, dealing with that, and then I did some research in, uh, Jason counties, and some of them are, uh, the language is similar to ours, Webster county has a, uh, a detailed, uh, section for just dealing with towers, and, uh, so it kinda varied quite a bit, and I, I talked a couple of you about this, but, uh, basically, what I come up with is, uh, is looking at what our ordinance is, and then maybe, uh, maybe giving a little more specific information to, to this company, and I talked to the person, and, and what I told them was I would talk to you, because I, I didn't, I couldn't change the ordinance, but we would discuss, uh, information that maybe I could provide for them for a little bit more specifics. The tower actually falls under, uh, Article Six, Section Four Seven, under, uh, Ag Two zoning, and this would be under the, uh, special exception use permit for that, uh, for that article, and basically, for that, uh, for that article, as far as height regulations, uh, it says that nothing can be over thirty-five feet, more or less specified otherwise, well, that's pretty vague. And so, uh, I looked back in the Section Ten, or Article Ten, Section Seven, which deals with exceptions for height, uh, and in that section, basically, again, it's, it's quite vague as far as, uh, dealing with, uh, with that information, and, basically, it covers a lot of different types of, of, uh, things as far as television, radio towers, church spires, bell freezes and such, and at the end, it says, basically, uh, they can be erected to any height not in conflict with any other applicable regulations. Well, that leaves it open to quite a bit of different interpretations, and, uh, in finding, and looking at some of the surrounding counties, like I said, there, some are more specific, but most of them deal with, yeah, with the height of the tower, as if it were to, uh, fall over. So, if you took your pen, and you, you stamped it on end, and, uh, if that pen is two hundred feet and it falls over, you're looking at a two hundred foot, uh, distance of fall over, and many of them indicated a, uh, indicated a, a distance to the property line equal to the height of the tower. So, in other words, if you have a two hundred foot tower, it fell over, uh, basically, it would, it could only go as far as the property line. There are some variations in some of those, but being ours is not real specific. Uh, I, I told a gentleman from the company that I would, I would make a recommendation, or at least talk to you about the fact, I would like to see it as the height of the tower going to a setback of twenty-five feet in any direction. And the reason for that is, uh, I felt that if, we don't know in some cases, some properties or acreages may have buildings, uh, you know, from built a long time ago before the ordinance, they might be right on a property line, and so I felt that the twenty-five foot setback plus the height of the tower would be better, but also, I would add to it the actual language at our ordinance, and simply say, whichever is greater. I, I looked up for, on the FCC, and, uh, that was quite a, quite a lengthy, uh, research on that, and most of the, most of that was, again, dealing, saying, well, local or state regulations would apply. Of course, the FAA has regulations on height, uh, especially, uh, you know, around airports and that kinda thing. So, I felt like any of the federal or state regulations would fall under the language that we currently have, but what I would add to it would also provide a little more specific information on, on what we would recommend for this particular, uh, company. Uh, in the long run, I think that we probably, it would be a good idea for us to look at having some sort of, uh, maybe specific information on this, to make it less vague, uh, down the road, maybe looking at, uh, some of the other things as well in the ordinance, that I have found that are really not, uh, specific enough for people to answer, and so, I guess my comment here is, or request is to say, like, to go ahead and contact this company back and just simply say, we would, uh, make the addition, I'm pretty sure you talked to the guy about this, of having the tower height plus twenty-five foot setback in all directions. Doesn't actually say that, but I would like to, to inform the gentleman of that, and he said that that would, that would be fine with them, in this case. So, hopefully, I zoomed through that quickly enough, uh, but I guess, I'd just entertain any questions or comments you might have.
I think that's a good idea, Randy, uh, I like that extra twenty-five feet on top of the height for the setbacks.
What'd you guys do for wind turbines, wasn't it one and a half times the height?
I think it was.
Yes, and that, but that would be, that would also fall under the categories of whether you're talking about the setback, or you're talking about the property lines, and a lot of that has to do with what is the lay of the land, and how closely are property lines in different directions, and that kinda thing, so, varies so much, depending upon where they wanna locate that tower, or a wind generator, or whatever, and so, again, I think that's maybe something down the road that, uh, you know, may be looked at. And so, again, I think that's maybe something down the road that, uh, you know, may be looked at as far as either bending or whatever we would do on the, uh, on the ordinance that is there now. So, uh, again, I apologize for the late on this, but he wanted something back as soon as possible. Like everybody, they wanted yesterday, so, uh, but I just thought I'd, I'd throw that out and, uh, see what you thought.
Do we need to change the ordinance? Do we need to, how do we have to change that?
I think in the future we do, but...
That's what I'm asking.
Well, Randy, um, you mentioned about the, the height twenty-five plus of twenty-five foot. You mentioned that to the company or the gentleman acquiring.
Right.
Fine with that?
Right.
And that is a potential change, you would think? So...
Yeah.
At this point, we're prepared, as Danny said, they're wanting, uh, the clarification sooner than later. And, uh, what you're going to ask was a grantable. You go ahead and just make sure that, yeah, so thank you. This, uh, right now, right? And remembering that this will have to go through the special exception use process of the, uh, board adjustments. So all of that would be included in that. And so, uh, they, they would have to agree with that through the, uh, special exception use, uh, hearing and that kind of thing. So, and that would also, I want to make sure that, uh, that would also include any, uh, any other parts of the tower. I don't know if it was a guide tower or if it's a monocle tower. He didn't mention that. But I would, I would say the tower and any other supporting or any other parts of the tower would be included in that, in that requirement. Something said?
Eric?
Yes, sir.
We've got John here.
Hi, John.
Hi. I don't, I don't think you need to amend the ordinance if you want to set conditions on granting a special use exception permit. I think you can set the conditions you talked about or recommended under those conditions. Tell the company that and then have the board of adjustments hold on whether to approve it that way. If you want to have something more specific in the zoning ordinance, we would have to amend it. But as far as granting a special use permit or a variant, I think one of the hurdles of the zoning administrator is you can make your recommendation saying, in this case, if it's going to be three hundred feet tall, I want three twenty-five as a setback. Um, and I think that's reasonable. I think that's reasonable to tell, tell the company that. And that's reasonable to recommend that wouldn't require any changes. If you're unhappy with the specificity in the zoning ordinance, then, you know, it sounds like you looked at other counties. By all means, if you have changes you want to suggest, my, my advice would be to make all the changes you want, submit those to the board and they can look at amending the zoning ordinance or adding things to the zoning ordinance. Uh, but as far as, I don't mean to repeat myself. So I, I think the way that you presented it is a good way to do it. And it would not require any amendment.
Perfect. So that very much summed up my question. So, so like that would be, uh, you know, a move forward with this right now. And I wasn't looking to say that this would be amendment right now. I'm just saying somewhere down the road because of the variations of neighboring counties, there's so much difference that it might be something that would be looked at at a later time. All I was asking for at this time was, uh, I didn't, I didn't know for sure if I have the authority to say this is what it's going to be without discussing this.
I think...
Why I brought this to you, so...
I think it's good to discuss it with the board. I think, I think you have the authority to make your own recommendation. And, uh, your recommendation sounds like a logical, good recommendation. And, uh, yeah, I think you thought this through very well. I think it's a good idea, it's a good recommendation. And it was very nice of you to bring it to the board.
Perfect.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, John, for being there.
Yeah.
Now, thanks, Randy. Does that get you where you need to be then with the board or the...
Uh, you must, I would just say one other thing. Uh, you may remember that we tried to do some additions or, uh, maybe a little, being a little more specific in permit information on notices. And which we did do that in the paper. I also did a, uh, small, uh, thing on the, on the radio. And that has seemed to improve things. And so, uh, we discussed that before. Uh, we'll see what happens, but I'm getting more feedback that people are, uh, more informed about that. So that was encouraging as well.
Good. Awesome.
That's all I need. Thanks. All right?
Thanks, Randy.
Yep.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
So moving on, now that we've got that done, uh, we do have the discussion, potential action on the continuity of the operation plan. So, I'd just thank you for telling some of them there.
Since all employees are back to work in the courthouse this week, um, I think we're of the opinion that we would put this on hold or on the back burner for now. I don't see a reason to continue it at this point. Uh, just your thoughts?
I would agree with that. They're all back to work.
Yeah.
We would need to do the every other week thing.
If it comes to the point where we need to do this again, I would come to you, ask you to reinstate it.
Yeah, if our numbers start to spike in the county, we can surely go back to doing it.
Okay.
We'll leave that up to you, Peggy.
Are you talking specifically just about the, uh, full staff at the courthouse just that?
Yes.
Anything more, more or less than that, just the fact that it's fully staffed, no more?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it doesn't really need any action then if we're not going to continue it? I just thought I better put action on there in case you didn't agree with me and we wanted to keep doing this.
Yeah. Okay. We are at seven now in the county.
Yeah, correct.
And I think that still part of the reason that the numbers continue to climb is they're testing more people than...
Yeah.
The ability to have more tests. So we're probably going to find more people that would test positive, unfortunately. But knock on wood, we're still low compared to some counties, so...
Well, hopefully they'll have that antigen test that'll be more, uh, prevalent. We'll be able to get more people checked on that and then we'll know. It'll be easier then to make some decisions.
Awesome.
All right.
Well, I know it's lying. I don't know if, uh, if I just see, I know Diane, the recorder's office sent me... They're a hospital. And basically I'm not going to read it verbatim, but the fact that they are still at full staff now, uh, everything has been going quite well. She wanted to tell us that starting Tuesday, that, uh, they will take appointments if someone needs to come in to get the counter. Uh, only if their transactions cannot be completed by mail or over the phone or in the drop line. Uh, they will be screening anyone coming in, uh, recommending that the customers wear a face covering, bring their own pad, uh, so they will escort them in and out of the building. They will spray and wipe out the counter, the local abstracters. Uh, they have worked something out with them. They basically only have come in once, maybe twice a week into the mall, eat it on daily. And they have been very good about, uh, cleaning up after themselves, as you said, with their gloves and sanitizing. Uh, in regards to, uh, hunting and fishing licenses, uh, electronic licensing system, they, uh, both can complete that online for the two other businesses locally. Uh, they do have hardware hang and high V customer service with, uh, D and R processing machines for hunting and fishing licenses. Otherwise, uh, Diane also disclosed with saying thank you for all of that tax for personal protections and equipment supplies. So I think they're going quite well at the recorder's office for Diane's report.
And, uh, Jana stuck, excuse me, uh, Eric, uh, Jana, she dropped off her report for us this week too. So everything seems to be fine in her office also.
Good. And Peggy, everything is good? Are you busy with election business still, are you sure?
Yes.
Are the mail-in ballots still coming in pretty heavily?
Not as many as there were. They slowed down. So we're able to keep at least up on a daily basis with it. That first weekend was the busiest.
I'm glad.
Um, and that entire next few days after that, and then it started slowing down. So now we're able to keep up.
Okay, we do have, uh, some discussion on the language for the local option sales pack. Uh, with the incorporation here, you've wondered that previously. And I'm back here for, uh, further discussion of the language.
Say, Ben, you were, you were fine with the language?
Yeah, the language was fine to me.
Okay. And Peggy, the outlying cities have seen all that?
They all have copies of what their language was. And they're going through the same process you are.
Okay.
Um, if this language is okay and you don't want to change it, then I would have it on next week's agenda with a resolution to approve the language and officially file it for requesting an election.
Okay.
So we, we make the recommendation, we're good with the language. Then they are notified that the board is okay with the way it's written.
At the state.
And, uh...
No. Um, you have to have at least fifty percent approval by resolution by at least fifty percent of the governing bodies, or making up fifty percent of the population. So so far I have the city of Humboldt, I have Dakota City, I have Livermore. It doesn't hit that population thing until the county hits.
Okay.
Once the county hits, we'll hit that threshold and then all the rest of them need to get their language to me.
All right, well, we'll request you put that on the agenda for next week with approval.
Okay.
All right, good with that. Uh, do you have a meeting report?
Uh, the only, the only meeting I had was the L E C meeting last week, which was Zoom.
I didn't have any meetings other than several phone calls, I guess, today. One was on phone today with us, so...
I was not even attending the national meetings this last week. There's calls, not meetings. I didn't have anything left after playing golf or anything.
Uh, Wednesday the sixth, I had a VA conference call. And the VA hospitals are going to open back up. Uh, they will start seeing patients again. Suggest you call in, get your appointments and stuff, uh, at all the clinics. They'll be opening back up a little bit at a time, but they still want you to call. Then after I got done with that one, I got a call from Steve King. And he had a town hall meeting. And, uh, he's working on getting things, uh, opened back up again. And he said he is running for election, but that's in the back burner because right now he's got a pandemic to deal with and that's what he's dealing with. But he is running for election. That's all I had. Uh, food pantry this week?
Yes, I was, Wednesday night, I'm not sure, Wednesday afternoon. I'm not sure what particulars on it. We're having a ministerial meeting today at noon. So I'm going to ask if they're going to do it the way they're doing the food pantry here where people pull in, stay in their vehicle, they just give them a free bagged bag?
Oh, is this the one down the fairgrounds?
Yeah. Um, so I will, I guess I'll hopefully get some information on that at lunch. Uh, the other thing I would say is, um, I've had a couple of people upset about the food pantry, um, because they think that there isn't enough stuff being given out. Edmo is running the food pantry. And I'm not trying to pawn this off on, call Edmo. I'm just saying that the ministerial board isn't, they've turned it over to Edmo. And those are, they have the guidelines. And they don't want people in the food pantry. So that's why they're doing the drive up, bring the bag out, hand it to you. You get what you get. And I think that'll probably be, if I was to guess, I would say that would be what the mobile will be. We would be inside, put the bag together, bring it out, hand it to them, and that's what you get. So the other thing I'd say, Peggy, is Friday, all of us were involved in the distribution at, uh, Secondary Roads and our, uh, our sheriff's deputies. So, uh, all of us kind of scattered, went in different directions. Got that all taken care of, so...
Okay, um, I did have, uh, this past Monday, the board, the L E C meeting, the brick set by us though that morning. And also Bruce just mentioned, uh, was able to get the appreciation gift to the secondary roads and boat shops. And they were very, I think, always surprised. And they were certainly very appreciative. They said, thank you to everyone. So, does anyone else have anything else?
How about you, Peggy? Nothing?
Nope. Looks like we're good on his end.
You want to wait till two minutes and then we'll be at ten o'clock or you want to go early?
I'd like to be prior to ten. So I just feel like we accomplished something with prior to us being on the hour.
I will make a motion then at nine fifty-eight to adjourn.
Hold second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All, should we adjourn?